Okay, we will go ahead and call to order the work session for East Grand Forks City Council for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025. Call to order at 5 o'clock. Reminder, please turn on your microphones. And with the city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Merkelstein.
Here.
Council President Brian Larson.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Reapoff.
Here.
Council Members Tammy Schumacher.
Here.
Ben Pachivinsky.
Here.
Bill Helms.
Here.
Donald Casey.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. First item of discussion, Blue Peak Fiber Broadband Presentation. Mr. Huttenen and Representatives from Blue Peak.
It's Council Member Larson and members. I'll just introduce quickly Lucas Peterson and Randy Butler from Blue Peak. I've been in communications with Lucas and working with him for a few months now. Back in April, we had Lucas and a few team members from Blue Peak present to our staff at a staff level with their proposed expansion of their fiber internet service into East Grand Forks. And so wanted to bring them forward to you for a presentation and update on the work they've done. We do, just for reference sake, and I included some of that in the background information, we do have a cable franchise ordinance in place in the community and have started that work with the Blue Peak people on getting a franchise agreement drafted that speaks in compliance to that cable ordinance. So as part of this and the presentation we'll have tonight, if there's desire from the council to move forward with bringing Blue Peak into the community, ultimately a franchise agreement will come forward for your all as part of their build up process. So with that, I think I'll hand it to Lucas and Randy for presentation. Yep, up on your mic. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us. As Reed mentioned, my name is Lucas Peterson with Blue Peak Fiber Internet. We are currently expanding our fiber internet network in Grand Forks and have been looking at coming over to East Grand Forks to continue that expansion as a kind of a natural move being in Grand Forks. So just really appreciate the opportunity to come and chat with you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask them, interrupt at any time. But I'll start the kind of presentation, giving a little background of -- is that a mouse word? There we go. Of -- oh, went a little too far, but a little background into Blue Peak. In 2020, VAST Broadband, mainly a South Dakota company, and Clarity Telecom merged. Clarity's owned by GI Partners with the intention of expanding their service and bringing fiber internet to more communities in the Midwest and Southern Plains. With that, you can see on this map here, since that merger, we have expanded to four markets in Wyoming, a number of markets in the state of Oklahoma. One that's not on here is a market in Northern Texas, and then Grand Forks in North Dakota. And GI Partners has -- we are all privately funded, so it is privately funded money that is building out this infrastructure in communities across our footprint. And so when we go about looking at where we want to expand, we really focus on small, medium-sized cities, communities that have not had an investment made, an infrastructure investment made in fiber-to-the-home internet in their community. That is really our niche and where we want to go and bring fiber optic internet. We know that having fiber can really transform a community. Having reliable internet can be a great thing for businesses, for people that maybe work from home, and just for quality of life, being able to stream, having multiple kids on devices, things like that. The internet is -- continues to be more and more a part of our lives, and so that fiber connection, high-speed internet is more and more important. So our goal is to bring fast, reliable, and affordable internet to the communities we expand to. Another piece of that is we want to, when we come into a community, not only are we making investment in the infrastructure, but also we want to invest in the community, have a good relationship with, good working relationship with the city throughout construction, and a good relationship with the community as a whole. And so along with that infrastructure investment, we want to invest in groups or events or nonprofits, whatever's important to the city, whatever makes that city what it is. We want to support those efforts as well. And so I have a slide coming later, kind of showing some of the stuff we've done already in the area. But a little bit into our -- the services we offer, we start with a one gigabit tier speed, all the way up to five gigabits for residential. Those speeds are symmetrical, so you're getting one gigabit download speed, which is your streaming, anything you're bringing into your home, bringing it onto your computer, as well as one gigabit speed upload. So FaceTime, sharing files, anything you're sending out, you have the same speed download as upload. And that upload speed is becoming more and more critical. Typically, in a non-fiber network, you will have a faster download speed, but it's much slower upload speed. So that symmetrical speed is really key. For businesses and commercial, we offer up to and beyond 10 gigabits, depending on what a business would need. We use the Amazon Eero product for modem and router, and that is a mesh network, so it covers the entirety of someone's home. If you need, like my house, you might need an extender to get internet to the far reaches, but it covers it very well. That extender works well, and so it's a great product. And with that, our pricing is all-inclusive. And so when you have Blue Peak Fiber Internet, you pay the price that you see. There's no equipment rental. There's no extra fees on top of it. It's all included in that price that you pay. And talking about that a little bit, you can see, here's some of our cable, and we also offer cable television. Our internet service, again, starts at one gigabit speed for $55 a month, all the way up to that five gigabit speed. And we have a number of cable television options as well, in there with, you know, a local channel, all the way up to the max of all the channels, 130-some total. And again, that price is with a $10 a month auto-pay discount, and it includes everything you need. So when somebody, you know, is charged every month, they're paying that $55 or that $70 or $100 and nothing more. Here's a little bit about some partnerships. Our, you know, during the holiday season, we've done food drives and toy drives at our tech hubs and some of our markets. Up here, we have sponsored Hot Valley Nights in the past, one of my favorite events to come up to. Sad that it's not coming back this year. It was really a great time. And then along with events, we get involved with organizations, including like the Greater Grand Forks Chamber. You can see a picture of ribbon cutting there. But yeah, we want to be good members of the community. We want to work well with the community and the city when we come in. And so we always want to hear feedback as well of what makes, what's important to the city in terms of events or groups or nonprofits, and how can we invest outside of the infrastructure as well. Now I'll go into a little bit of the high-level design, kind of a map of what we'll build out, and explain a little bit about the construction process. So you can see, there's a map of East Grand Forks up there, split into different areas. They're called DAs or distribution areas. When we build the city, we split it out in distribution areas, usually about 400 to 500 homes in each distribution area, and then we build those out, maybe one, two at a time, and then turn on service as we complete that. And so you can see there, it's split up. As we get more involved in the process, that map will change to have, you know, where the lines are running, where we'll be doing construction. We'll have much more detailed maps of the distribution areas that we'll give to the city for permitting. And so, but we start with that franchise agreement. Once the franchise agreement is passed, we do the high-level design and begin working with engineering and public works on the design, the actual design of the network. Where should we go? What things should we know from the city? Bringing that input in is really important. Where should we maybe avoid? Where are we going to have, you know, a lot of concrete to go through, so maybe it's a better route this way, things like that. There's a good back-and-forth, working with the city before we submit those permits. Then you kind of get to Phase Two, where we come out, do the walk downs, actually look at the constructability, walk down the streets, really finalize those designs for permitting, and then we go into permitting with the city, submitting those permits. And then we also have some, I'll go into the next slide here, but some pre-construction activities, some meetings, things like that. This is an example of some of the permits and middles. We work backwards. We say we want to start construction at this date, work with the city to say, when do we need the permits submitted to you to have construction starting at this time, and then here's when we need to have our engineering done, things like that. And we break it out. You can see the DAs there, the footages of each one, and kind of a tracker of how things are going. So this will be something that we work with the city on to kind of track our progress, make sure everyone knows where we want to be going, when, and does that work for everyone involved. This is, our construction at East Grand Forks will be underground, 100% underground. And so this will be kind of the hardware that you'll see around town. We have both in yards, it'll be either above-the-ground boxes or flush-mount boxes, depending on what is already in the easement. If there's already boxes there, we kind of try to put like with like, but if there's not, we try to put, you know, flush, keep it as much undisturbed as possible from when we were there. And then those bigger cabinets go each in a distribution area. Those are kind of the main connector to which then we build out the DA and provide service to the home. And so those will, those smaller boxes go at the home, and then service, once service is requested, the fiber comes from there up to the house and is installed from there. And then this is, I was talking about having some meetings with the city as we get going. This is kind of a timeline of our construction. We start designing, engineering, permitting, start with that kind of kickoff planning meeting with the city, continue to meet on permitting, design throughout the process. About one to two months before construction begins, we'll have a construction kickoff meeting with the city, once we have permits figured out, to kind of say, here's where we're going, here's where we're starting, and then get, make sure we have all of our ducks in a row before we start construction. Then I'll go to the next slide here and talk about communication. Thirty days out from when construction starts is when we start our communication with the residents in that distribution area, letting them know that there's going to be construction happening. So we start about a month out, send that first postcard, letting them know that construction will be happening soon, giving our contact information, website, phone number. Important thing to note, our call center is based in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So when someone calls with a question, wants service, whatever they need, they're calling somebody that works at Blue Peak in Sioux Falls. It's not outsourced or anything like that. So they're talking with Blue Peak employees that can provide real answers for them. Then about five to 10 days later, we send out another postcard, again with our information, letting them know construction will be happening. Then about 15, 10 to 15 days before construction, we send out that letter in the middle, has a lot of frequently asked questions, what will construction look like. Again, has our contact information, but that's more detailed. So if people have questions, they can hopefully get that information there, or also find it on our website. Then three days before construction starts, we go and put door tags on all the doors that will be doing construction past their homes. Again, letting people know it's here, this is what you've been receiving the information about, and you'll see our crews in the area in the next three days. And then once construction starts, of course, as the city allows, we like to put up yard signs, especially on kind of major street corners in that area, to let people know that crew that they're seeing, that's Blue Peak, that's what they've been getting the mail about, has our contact information on there as well. But we want to make sure that people know. We communicate well beforehand. They know what's going on. They know how to contact us. We don't want the city to get an influx of a lot of calls with people wondering what's going on. That's our responsibility. And so with that, we will have regular meetings with the city, typically bi-weekly, construction meetings, where we'll go over, you know, our plans for the next couple of weeks. It's a good point of, you know, follow-up, if there's things that are needed. We'll go through, we have a tracker for people that have called in, if there's an issue, or maybe their grass didn't grow back right, things like that. We go through that tracker sheet and say, we have a call from this resident at this address, here's how it was resolved. So the city's informed of anything that's going on. But then the city also doesn't have to take an influx of calls as well and try to figure out how to resolve it. So with that, that's kind of a brief overview, brief presentation. A lot of our contact information is on here, myself, Randy, our construction manager for the area. Another thing I will note is we do have a local office in Grand Forks, have a shop, and where all of our trucks are. We have local field engineers, technicians, salespeople. So when somebody needs service, or they have, you know, they need something hooked up, or their service went out, it's somebody right in the area that can respond quickly to get that taken care of. They're not coming from, you know, a water town or Sioux Falls or something, taking a long time. We do have people locally that work for us that can resolve those issues quickly. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and again, appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you all.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions for the representatives from Blue Peak? Mayor?
So Reed, when you say, would it be the timeline then for getting the franchise agreement put together and reviewed by both parties? Are we talking a couple of months? Are we talking soon, I guess?
Yeah, that process has started already. We've been through with Ron and myself, been through a first review of it, and made suggestive revisions back to Blue Peak, and their council has it now. So I would expect, you know, fairly quickly, we'd be able to turn that around. A definitive timeline, I couldn't say for sure without knowing exactly what Blue Peak might be asking for. But a month or two is probably reasonable at this point.
Okay. Any further questions? Mr. Pachivinsky.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative. What's the timeline, once we get the franchise agreement in place? Because I know residents are going to have questions on this. I assume we're starting in Design Area 1, going to 2, 3, 4? Or do you work in multiple areas at once?
Yeah, we typically, I would say, just a rough estimate, probably three years total to build out everything. Might be a little less, might be a little more. Typically, we like to take the first year a little bit slower, just to make sure we have our feet underneath us, work out any, anything that we need to, and then we go faster. So I'd say total time would be three years or so. In terms of where we start first, usually that is in consultation with the city. So, you know, where's easiest for us to pull off? Some dark fiber. There's a fiber ring that goes around Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, potentially start there. But we also want to work with the city on if a street is going to get redone next year. We don't want to go in, have construction on that street, and then next year, same thing. We'll just do it at the same time, if that works for the city. Or on the opposite, if we need to stay away, then we'll plan it kind of that way. So I couldn't tell you for sure right now where we would start, but that's kind of our process of where can we tie off from first, from that fiber ring, and then how does it, you know, work with what the city has plans for infrastructure projects, things like that. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
How does it work for a homeowner? You know, does Blue Peak install the infrastructure, say, like along the street, and then there's some opportunity for them to have that ran directly into their house as you go through?
Yes. Yep. So initial construction will be, it goes past the house, it'll have a box, and then the customer, once we have it, usually about 30 days before construction's complete, they'll start getting some postcards and information of, hey, get into pre-sale, sign up now. Once they sign up, then we take that fiber line from the box and dig it up to the house. Usually it's a small trench, but sometimes it'll be a temporary line. Then we put a box on the house, hook up the fiber, and then on the inside, have a fiber hookup that then goes to the modem and the router. So.
Okay. And if you already have service from a different provider, how does that, if someone wanted to switch to Blue Peak, for example, like, how do you pull that off?
So it's pretty simple. You just, once you, what I typically tell people is, you know, to ensure that you have continuity of service, you know, if you want to sign up, wait till installation happens, wait till it's set up, and you make sure you have service, our service, and then you can just cancel or get rid of the other service that you have. But typically, I tell people, wait, wait until that happens, so you're not, you know, cancel one day, and then something happens where you can't get our service installed, so you're out of it. But yeah, it's pretty, pretty simple. We don't use other providers like facilities or anything like that to get to the home. It's all ours. So it'd be a new, like, box on the side of the house, things like that. But.
Okay, great. Do you plan to meet with the public and private schools in the area as well, to kind of show what you can provide them for?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, we have a member of our organization that works specifically with, like, schools and other large contracts, hospitals, things like that, and will put in bids for that and reach out and work with them on getting service. So yeah, we have somebody in our, in our sales department that reaches out specifically to schools and other large kind of enterprises.
Great. Okay. Any further questions? Okay. I see none. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, let's move on to item number two then. Review of the annual comprehensive financial report for 2024. Carla Anderson and Brian Upsall.
Hi, I'm going to help Brian hand these out, but I will let him speak. He's from our ratings. Get him to get started.
All right. Thanks, Carla. So the intent.
This is what's in here.
The intent for this evening is basically to go through the audit process, and basically anything that we found during that process, and to kind of communicate that on a high-level overview. As I will go through some of the numbers that we'll see in the financials, you know, that's more informative, and if there's questions on, you know, trends, where the data, where the information's coming from, et cetera, hopefully Carla can pitch in, and certainly if there's more detail needed, I can provide that information at a later time. One thing you'll notice is this is still in draft format, which does allow us a little bit of time to go through any questions or issues that anybody might have, if there's some updates that we need to do, et cetera. We just got the fire department information this morning, so I wanted to make sure we had time to get that in there and square it away before we finalize the report. So the report's due June 30th, which we should have no problems getting that done. Before I get started, there are a couple communications to have with the council before, or required at the end of the audit. No disagreements with management, no difficulties performing the audit. We appreciate all the help that we get. It's timely and accurate, so we appreciate that, and that makes it go pretty smooth. This year, as you'll see when we get in, we have a single audit as well, which is like a separate audit within an audit related to compliance with federal grants. So it wasn't just your normal audit that we normally go through, it's a little bit extra as well. One soapbox item I got, and I might have communicated this last year, I'm kind of losing track of who I said this to and who I didn't, but we've had lots of entities now fall victim to some email cyber fraud and that kind of thing. So just be very cautious if you're paying anybody electronically, which it would include your employees for direct deposits, et cetera, if you're getting. Sometimes contractors now are requesting electronic payments. If you ever get a request to change a routing number or account number, please follow that up with a phone call. Had it all the way up to basically taking the form that they use, filling that out, and, but before you know it, something's happened. And even if you have cyber fraud protection, like in your insurance plan, usually that doesn't cover very much of it, because it's still, they're going to say it's at fault of the employee, et cetera. So just a couple of things I wanted to point out, just to hopefully not have that issue arise in the first place, because it's hard to get that money back. So we'll get into the, we'll start with the big report, the annual comprehensive financial report. You'll notice it is front and back, so hopefully the staple holds here. The first part of this report, and I should mention too, if you have questions, just feel free to interrupt me, or I'll interrupt for questions at the end as well. The first part of this report is pages 1 through 7. And this section is, includes the letter of transmittal, which is an informative letter from finance, basically explaining some highlights of what happened during the year, some information going forward, and it's a required part of the ACFA, as we commonly refer to this as, to get your certificate of Financial Achievement Award, which the city has always received many years in a row now. And that part is in that section as well. The second part of the report starts on page 8, and this is where we come into play as far as the audited opinion. We have issued or plan to issue, I guess, is an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which should be considered a good or clean opinion, that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So it is management's responsibility for the numbers, the financials, the footnotes, everything in here, and our responsibility as auditors to come and ensure that they're reasonably stated, and that's what our opinion is stating. So we do help put the book together, but it's all, you know, still a responsibility of management. One other thing to note is we had a change in accounting principle this year. Not a big impact as far as the financials, but in the past, for compensated absences, like vacation, sick leave, that kind of thing, we've only set up the portion of vacation, sick leave that gets paid out upon termination as a liability. The new standard required another set of review, basically saying, if there's anything that doesn't get paid out upon termination, but you're going to possibly use some, you also should set that up. And so the accrual itself increased a little bit because of that fact, but not a big dollar amount, and it doesn't really change any of your procedures as far as paying it out. It just finds its way to the financial statement, saying, even though you might not use your sick, or get paid out your sick leave, if you're going to use five days next year, we kind of set that up. So that's the big change for this year's financial statements. The next section is pages 11 through 19. And I always say, if you're looking for a snapshot of what happened during the year, just kind of in a summary, these would be the pages that I'd take and look through and read through. It provides some analysis on what's going on within the financial statements, and then also some details on some of the whys, like why something went up or why something went down. So for example, if you look on page 15 and 16, especially 16, you're going to notice in there that we explained basically what had, what happened, what went up, what went down in each of the major funds. And then there's a lot of detail in here for why that had happened. So like I said, if you're looking for a couple pages to take a snapshot, these would be the pages, and it helps maybe give you the aha moment as far as why something went up or went down in 2024. So hopefully no surprises by this time when we look at the financial statements. There's also comparative information in that section as well that is condensed, so it's kind of hard to, you know, get a whole lot out of it, but might generate a question, et cetera, as well. Then we get into the actual audited financial statements, which starts on pages 20 and 21. This is known as the Statement of Net Position, and it's very similar to a balance sheet in that we start with your assets, deferred outflows, and we subtract out your liabilities, and deferred inflows, and then the bottom of page 21 shows your actual net position within the city as a whole. I'll point out that this is a full accrual financial statement, so we'll get to that in a little bit, but it basically means we're going to include your depreciation, your fixed assets, your long-term debt. to include your depreciation, your fixed assets, your long-term debt, and show all that detail on these financial statements. And as we go through the financials, we're going to kind of break that down into different funds where you're going to probably have your budgetary level of control, where you're going to make your decisions, et cetera. But this financial statement does include all those accruals. So on the bottom of page 21, the third column from the left of numbers is the overall net position, $202,714,792 on a full accrual level. You'll also see the column all the way on the right is your EDA fund, which is also part of our audit, where we go through and make sure that everything's tied in for your EDA fund as well. So you can see the EDA fund has a little bit over $6.2 million of, of net position at year end. Page 22 then shows the changes within those full accrual numbers. And so three lines to the bottom, you're going to see third column of numbers, a positive change of $2,838,823. Keep in mind that this is going to be different from what you see in the fund statements, because the items that you spend, let's just say on capital assets, for example, it's an expense in your fund statements, but here it gets capitalized. So it doesn't look, you know, it doesn't show up as an expense here. It just gets depreciated. And so that kind of catches up over time. But on a one-year statement, it's kind of hard to get to that point. So the component unit also was, ended up down $301,235. A large portion of that ended up being the COVID loans that were forgiven. So basically, those, those funds have been on the books. I can't remember the exact number.
Three years.
Three years. And, and forgiven mostly in 2024, and I think a few of them in 2025. So that's, that's why that happened. Then we get into the statements that I think are a little bit easier to follow, pages 23 and 25. This is where we get into your government funds. So we have what we call four major funds, your first one being the general fund. Two lines from the bottom on page 23, you're going to see the overall fund balance is $8,188,000. Those would be the dollars that basically are your equity or retained earnings within the general fund. The number that you see right above that, the unassigned portion, $8,78,508, those would be the funds that are not restricted for any purpose. They're not earmarked at this point in time for anything. So those would be the funds available to spend within the general fund. Other thing I guess I'll point out on this page is your current city projects fund currently does have a deficit of $331,724. So, you know, one of the things we look at is when that, when you, any fund that gets negative, to make sure that, you know, everybody's aware, and there's a plan in place to get that fund back and whole. Because right now, they're borrowing money from a different fund to, to make that whole. So.
And I can explain most of that has to do with the LaFay Park, that we will have another, we will submit a payment to the DNR here in just the next week. Jeremy, I'm working on getting that in place.
And then I guess the other thing, just as long as I'm seeing it now, is that fifth column of numbers, it's titled non-major governmental funds. We, those are funds that don't meet the criteria for breaking it out here, but we have all of that information broken out in the back of the financials. So any fund that you're looking at or want to look into is, is in the financials at some point. You can see that there's some unassigned deficits there, too. One of them is the ARPA fund, which is a small deficit. And then transit also had a small deficit, which are broken on the back. But just to kind of point out, those are the only three funds that currently have deficit fund balances for the end of 2024. Moving then to page 20, or excuse me, 25, these are the changes then within those funds. So three lines to the bottom, you can see the general fund was up $943,700. This is going to be after transfers in and transfers out. So a lot of activity kind of moves back and forth based off of, you know, budgetary decisions, et cetera. Overall, the column all the way on the right, you can see the overall of the city governmental funds was Then we get into page 27. We have the budget to actual for the general fund. We do have this broken out in much more detail in the back of the financial statements. That's one of the things that's still in process as far as the draft form. So we're probably not going to go in much detail there. But you could see on this statement, this is just a condensed level. The, the number that you see on the bottom right corner was the difference between what you anticipated and what actually happened. So positive variance of $1,069,745, a combination of more revenues than you anticipated, and also less expenses than you anticipated. So a positive variance as far as the, the budget is concerned.
And those are explained in more detail on page 15 and 16, on the big items that made those changes. For example, we collected more property taxes. Part of that was because we raised the property tax value from last year to this year, but we also had some delinquent taxes that were paid off that, and they also had penalties and interest with that for about $333,000. So that was a huge amount.
Then we get into the, what we call the enterprise funds, the for-profit funds. And so page 28 starts that. We have all of the funds broken out here. So electric, water, sewage, stormwater, commercial properties, and refuse funds are all broken out here. So if you're looking for any detail, this is where you're going to find those. If you look on the bottom of page 29, this is once again, going to be the net position within each one of those funds. The second line from the bottom is the unrestricted portion of your net position. So these would be the funds that aren't tied into your capital assets. And so you can see all of them are, are positive, except for the refuse fund does have a deficit, $360,000 of unrestricted. So just something to take a peek at. The other part of the fund balance ends up being like all the infrastructure, the, the property that you have, that also gets included in those net position numbers at the bottom. It also has your internal service funds all the way on the right, a positive $2,097,254 in your internal service funds. Page 30 then shows the difference in each one of those funds, three lines from the bottom. The column second from the right is the total for your enterprise funds, up $805,967. This is also after transfers out of about $481,000. So just keep that in mind that there have been funds transferred to other governmental funds as well. And then lastly, for the financial statements in the front here, we have your cash flow statements for each one of those proprietary funds. Page 31, about three lines from the bottom, you can see the overall change in cash and cash equivalents. Two columns from the right, you're basically broke even. You're up $54,500 in cash and cash equivalents for your enterprise funds. The internal service funds was down $520,851. Keep in mind, too, that this is just cash flows. So if investments don't get shown on this statement either. So if you, let's just say you put cash into a CD, it's going to show negative cash on this statement, but your investments actually went up. So just keep that in mind as well. And cash flows is always subject to some timing differences with when you receive something or when you pay something at year end. So just keep that in mind. Then we get into the footnotes to the financial statements. Typically, don't go into much detail in this section. It's pages 33 through 54. Lots of information on your accounting policies, changes within your capital assets. If you're looking for debt schedules or, or changes within your debt, that's where you're going to find that. We can circle back if there's any questions. Pages, page 62, this then starts that other section I was talking about, where we break out all of the other different funds that maybe aren't listed separately on the front of the financial statements. So there's a pretty large section where we kind of go into each different section of funds, starting with special revenue funds. Then we have some debt service funds and capital projects funds. And so pages 62 through 81 would carry all of that activity, if there's any questions. Page 82, as I mentioned before, this is where we start breaking out your general fund budget in quite a bit of detail. This is still a work in process. The numbers in total are right, but line by line, there's some changes that need to be made. So take that with a grain of salt, that that'll be something to take a look at when you get the final to, to see what changed there. That might have some questions as far as, you know, some of the specifics as to why you were over or under budget item, budget line items. Page 99 then through the end of the report. The, to get the certificate, you have to have a statistical section. And, and this starts that section, which has lots more detail on trends. And so if you're looking for 10 years of activity, you're going to see lots of different breakouts in this section, all the way from tax levy information to debt information in a lot more detail than what you're going to find anywhere else in the financial statements. So I don't have anything necessarily to point out in this section right now, but certainly if there's, once you get a chance to digest this, if there's questions, we can certainly help, you know, kind of let you know where the numbers are coming from and tie that back.
We even have information on the population, the val, the, how much people make, the average value, and even the number of students in the schools. So we do work with other organizations to get all this information. We have on there the top 10 property owners and what the value is of, of them, the number of employees. So there's a lot of information that we have to collect from other sources. So I just want to thank my staff for helping me do all that, because it is a lot of work. And, and the community is very helpful with it. And I know we get some stuff from Maggie, too, in her department. So thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of actually cool to look at some of the stuff and just where, where things were at, even 10 years ago till now. It's, it's, I, I'd say not every, not every one of these statements, you know, means a, a lot to everybody, but there's probably a few of them in here that you're going to be, find interesting. So like I said.
For example, we even have building permits in there that we get the building department in the last 10 years. And you can kind of see, you know, the trends and when and why. And we all know when and why. We had more building going on at those times, too.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions that might be through that. And like I said, I realize you're looking at this probably for the first time, or a little bit digested over the weekend, maybe, but.
Everybody gets excited with numbers.
It's a lot of information to digest, for sure. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Do you want to talk about the single audit?
Yeah, I do have two other reports. If you want me to just go through them, we can.
Yeah, and we can ask questions at the end. Is that?
Yeah.
Work good for you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Carla. So there's another report that's a little bit thicker than the two-pager, if that rings any bell. We have, this is called the Single Audit Act Report, where we've issued basically two reports. The first one starts on page one. This is the, what we call the Government Auditing Standards Letter, where we go through your high-level overview of your internal control structure, looking at your internal controls, compliance with laws and regulations. We do not have any findings or comments that we had during that testing. It also includes Minnesota Legal Compliance Guide, where we do some testing over things like pledged collateral, conflicts of interest, bid work. That's also a clean report. So we had no issues when we did that testing. Then pages three through five is the Single Audit Report, also known now as the Uniform Guidance. Once you receive and spend over $750,000 of federal awards, you're required to have this special single audit. That is changing to $1 million going forward, but for this year, it's still 750. We tested your coronavirus recovery funds program. We have an unmodified opinion on that program. So we didn't have any issues compliance-wise, internal control-wise, doing that testing. So that is considered a clean opinion on your single audit. Page six then breaks out the different kinds of federal dollars that you had. So you can see about $1.1 million of federal dollars, $700,000 was the coronavirus dollars. So that'll go away, I guess, going forward. So unless you get other.
Yeah, we spent it all.
Okay. So might not have single audits going forward unless you get other federal grants, which is possible.
The only thing is that we do, the last time we had to do this was when we had a large amount of transit and we had our federal projects, which I think believe now is going up. And, and so it just depends on the timing of when we spend on that project and what, what we spend on transit. So it is something that we have to do every now and then.
And that's pretty much it in that report. There was no findings. So a clean report there. So that looks good. And then the last thing that we have here is we go through the audit. There are certain things that we come across that maybe aren't items that are material in nature, but we consider them best practices. And so three different things that we found here. One of them was fuel inventory. We typically review the inventory and make sure that that gets tracked to ensure, you know, if something were to go wrong, it's nice, it's easier to find it if you're reconciling that on a monthly basis versus just at year end. And so our recommendation there was to make sure that that's recorded monthly and tested quarterly, at least for accuracy, to make sure that you don't have anything major going on there. Pension reporting, we did some testing where within PERA, terminated employee wasn't updated within the system. So just making sure that that gets done timely to avoid any confusion there. And then the last one was special assessment debt. Fund 539 had insufficient resources to cover the outstanding debt. And so I think that's known, and you're budgeting some transfers to cover that. But just something that we saw that we wanted to just bring to your attention, make sure that everybody's aware.
And Fund 539 has to do with when we did the street project, the whole city was done in over three years. And what happened is that when we do the buy, the bonding, they build an interest that we expect to get with a special assessment payment that goes to the county. And we had a lot of people that came in and paid that off. So we weren't getting of the, any of the interest that we had planned on getting. And so that is why that fund is short. We have been making transfers out of the general fund for that. We budget for that. And we also have some bond funds that have a balance but have been paid off. So those actually are available to do some of that, too. So that's the reason we haven't spent any of those other bonding dollars. So we, if anything comes up like this, we have money to pay that. And that won't have to come, a large amount have to come from the general fund. But we have been making transfers for it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Very informative presentation here. Any questions for Carla or Mr. Upsall?
I have just one that, you know, one that sticks out in my mind right now, because I got, it's a lot of stuff to go through. But the fuel inventory, are you concerned about, is this like somebody's filling vehicles that aren't marking it down?
No, no.
Or are you looking about if there's any leaks or?
No, it's just that the process in the past was we just, it was read every, every month. We actually charged back to every department every month. And that just had gotten missed for a little bit. And that was the check inventory. So, and, and, and we've already corrected it. It was corrected right in January. So.
I was just curious if it was concerning.
No, it's not a big thing.
Maybe there might be some leak somewhere or something.
No, no. And we have updated the, the fuel inventory. I know Jessica can speak about it. And we, you know, that's an item we have looked out at, even replacing or upgrading. And so it has been, it has to be tested about every five years. So, yeah, and that's passed the test. So we know there's not leakage and stuff.
And we do monthly checks as well.
Yep. And they do monthly. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, that's why I was just more concerned about, I guess.
The other questions or discussion regarding the comprehensive financial report?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe later.
That's why I'm calling.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three. Consider updated lease agreement between the city and independent school district 595. Mr. Hutten and Mr. King.
I'll take over. Thank you, Mr. President, City Council, and Mayor. The city's agreement with the IDS 595 is coming to an end for the civic center, the VFW in the Blue Line Arena. Mr. Hutten and myself had an opportunity to sit down with Superintendent Grover and, and come up with some numbers that we feel are fair for, for both parties. The proposed amount for 2026 would be 120,000. That's a $10,000 jump than what we had from last year. If you look back on the, the current agreement, it was 105,000 in 2022 and 2023, followed by 110,000 in 2023, 2024. And then it stayed at 110,000 for that remain, the following year, 24, 25. So that's where we came up with the, the agreed-upon price of 120,000. Then it escalates $5,000 year after year for the, the next two years. Superintendent Grover plans to bring this to the school board for a vote on Thursday, the 26th. And the recommendation here would be to approve the lease agreement with the school district.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. King or, or Mr. Hutten? All right, I, I see none.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four. Consider approving sanitary lift station number five heater replacement. Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. So our sanitary lift station five has a heater for the wet well. The heater is no longer working properly. There's two of the three elements in it are completely non-functioning. A third one is barely functioning. So the recommendation is to purchase another heater for the lift station. The Johnson The Johnson Controls is the one that gave us the, the quotation that you see in front of us, this came off the Sourcewell page, it's $55,350 is the quote for that. We also, to install the electrical portion of it, we contacted Eagle Electric, that's not part of this request, but they estimated about $556 to do the work. If the heater has some different elements and they had to change things, it could be as high as $3,000, but we don't, we don't see that as far as hookup costs, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Stordahl? Mr. Helms, please.
Yeah, a couple of them. How old is this heater in there?
It was put in 2015, it's about 10 years. We have another one in our lift station number four on the point, that one's been in there longer, I think 2009, if memory serves right, or maybe earlier. We asked what they feel the issue is with the heater, why it failed as early as it did. One of the things that they said was it could be due to a air imbalance issue. The other heater in lift four has something in it that does something with the air balance that this one will have. The other thing would be a glycol degeneration or degradation, but that's probably less likely that it's that, so.
This one, right, put the new motor in, we'll have that air equalization thing. What kind of motor are we, are we putting in there that's $55,000?
It's explosion-proof, so it's, there's a lot that goes, goes with that, with all the different gases that come off of it, so.
Okay.
That's it for me.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, I see none.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number five, requests for memorial sign at Griggs Park Playground. Mr. King.
Thank you again, Council President, City Council and Mayor. The Akerwach family, who has helped with the fundraising and design at the Griggs Park Trailhead playset, has requested to place memorial sign for former Parks and Recreation Superintendent Dave Aker near the playset. City staff has reviewed the request and finds the sign to be in line with the city's past practice of recognizing those families or individuals who have helped enhance public spaces. The proposed sign would be a 30 by 30 in size, placed on a 60-inch-high sign holder and placed in a location where it won't interfere with the park space. The design, installation, and signage will come at no cost to the city, and the plan would be to install it as soon as, as soon as they have the sign available. Kind of give you an update where we're at on construction on that project right now is we, we have the concrete border in place that was installed by Carview Brothers Concrete, and they were able to get a donation out of Coast Materials out of Fargo to do that, to donate the materials to that park, so that, that was able to shave close to $3,000 off the, the price of that playset, so that's money that will be able to stay in the All True Fund, as we had kind of discussed before, of covering that gap. We have taken delivery of the playset, and that's on-site, and we are about two weeks out from installation before we'll be able to finalize that, that park. So if approved by all of you at the next council meeting, we would probably try to get that sign installed prior to the playground equipment being installed, so that we, just one last step of having to dig through the materials to get it installed. Recommendation would be to approve the sign placement at Griggs Park Playset.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Any, any questions from the council for Mr. King on this topic? All right, I see none, okay, thank you. And that brings us to item number six, review of the 2025 deer hunt management plan. Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. Tonight, we are just bringing forward the updated 2025 plan. This includes the two separate seasons, the additional permits that have been discussed, and includes the map for Zone Six, which will be kind of in the Old Folsom Park area. We submitted all the applications to the DNR, I received notification in April that they have been approved or accepted. They have not been listed yet, it's still 2024 information, but I'm assuming before archery season this fall, that information will come up. We did, as requested, $20 again for residents, and then we did a $75 permit for those that live outside city limits. When we get a little bit closer to the hunt, we will get some educational information out, maybe try and get some articles in the newspaper, get some stuff on our website, just to make sure people are understanding, aware of what's going on. And I guess if there aren't any questions, or I'll take any questions, but otherwise we'll just request, or the request is to have council approve the updated management plan.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Nelson or Mr. King on the deer management plan? Mr. Helms?
Yeah, just a quick one, do we have any idea of what, how many deer we have out there now again, or, I mean, are we, you know, are we making a headway from last year's to this year, or?
So we did not do a survey this, in 2024, we did an informal survey in the last week of March. Due to the mild winter, we figured we haven't touched very much, so we have not done an informal survey again. In the management plan, we're, especially with this last year, the plan is to kind of do that informal survey again in 2027, beginning in 2027, to see where we're at. You know, we, if council would like, we definitely can do it sooner than that, but the way things look, the population, I think, is still growing.
So how many licenses did we give out last year?
10.
10. And we're doing 10 again this year?
16.
16, okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, any further questions? I see none, thank you very much. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. We'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Helms.
Second.
Second by re-appel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes and meeting is closed. Thank you, everyone.